Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Monday, July 23rd, 2018. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane is absent. Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Lauren Gregory of the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and ask you again for wisdom, Lord, as we handle the people's business. Just give us unity of mind and of heart and just bless these meetings and these people who serve. We ask this, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a presentation, a proclamation declaring July as National Parks and Recreation Month. So I do have a proclamation I'll read. Proclamation declaring July 2018 as National Parks and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Series. And our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas community recreation programs at parks and recreation facilities provide children with a safe refuge to play and a place to play, which helps to reduce at-risk behavior such as drug use and gang involvement. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the City of Series recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation programs and resources. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chris Viera, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month and urge all citizens to use and enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities. Proclaim this 23rd day of July 2018.
Just gonna say a few things. I'm Cambria Pollinger, and I've had the honor of working for the City of Series for almost 21 years. So I just wanted to kind of give a little update. Mr. Rogers is quoting, "Have said, when I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You always find people who are helping.'" Recreation's sole function is to help people, and we pride ourselves in helping others. Recreation is a unique animal. We are one of the only divisions to have part-time staff, 26 to be exact, and the only division where our business is optional, and our success is solely based on our customer service. Despite economic ups and downs, the loss of teammates, and surrounding cities offering similar programs, Series Recreation has not only survived, but we have thrived. In 1998, when I started here, just to give you a context, I was 22, and my son was seven weeks old, and now he's 21 and shipping off to the Navy in two weeks to become a pararescuer. Recreation was under what was then the Management Services Department. Myself, who was part-time, and another part-time person were the whole division. We had three to four classes and programs, one rental space, three community parks where we were in charge of the Christmas festival and the concerts in the park, and we had worked on building the skate park. In 2002, we combined three divisions into one department, gained a director, a full-time secretary, and one part-time coordinator. In the next seven years, we built the community center and the Riverbough Soccer Complex, increased our classes, expanded our community engagement, created the Series Youth Commission, gained five other special events, and put on several new hats, including marketing, economic development, and partnering with the Series Unified District and the Chamber of Commerce. In the last nine years, we went from a family of three divisions to one. Found ourselves under the wing of police, city manager, and now planning. We have been on the forefront of bringing art and nature to our community, but most importantly, we continue to be a place where people know that we care. The letter I'm gonna read you was written by a parent to one of our staff members, Angela Mendoza. Dear Angela, thank you so much for providing so many great memories and opportunities to learn and grow for my Gigi. Words cannot express how grateful we are to you. I truly don't know how you do it. You are amazing. I would like to share a little bit about myself with you. I grew up just down the street from my local community center, and as a child, I used to plaster my little face against the window to watch and envy all the activities the kids on the inside were doing. I was always shooed away and told not to come back. My entire childhood, I dreamed of taking a class at the community center. So being able to put my child in classes and camps has been an incredible healing experience for me. Being able to do that for her, what my parents could not do for me, has been such a blessing for both of us. I do not have any good childhood memories for myself, but now I can say that my Gigi will have many of them, thanks to all your hard work and dedication. Gigi looks so forward to every summer having the opportunity to attend your camps and classes. She will be telling me about how much fun she had for the rest of the summer and next school year anticipating next year's camps. We both absolutely love your tea parties, and my oldest daughter was a professional hula dancer, and when you played Hawaiian music, I had to hold back the tears because it was such a great memory experience for both of us. God bless you for everything you have done for us and so many other children. Hope you have a great summer. Because of you, I know we will. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. With that, we will move on to citizens' communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forth and state your name.
I'm back. Leonard Shepherd. I listened to Cambria's talking in that letter. You know, when I was a kid, I was raised in the town of Sanger, and it was a little town, and there was one little park they had, and there was a sign up at that park that said, "No roller skating," it was before skateboards, "No roller skating, bicycling, no dogs, no this, no that," and it said, "This is your park, enjoy it." And I kinda wondered, what the heck were they talking about? You couldn't do anything in your park. You were supposed to enjoy it. The one thing I like, and I don't like about the fact that several years ago, the city council, and I don't think any of you were on it, but they made a law saying you couldn't have a glass of wine, or I couldn't smoke my pipe, or somebody couldn't smoke a cigarette, or whatever, no alcohol, because of three people that complained that thought the gangs were taking over the park. They passed the rules against it, affecting hundreds of people who just want to come to the park, have a picnic, maybe drink a beer or a glass of wine, and they can't do it. It's against the law. That's the same thing as enjoy your park. How can you sometime? I just, you know, I think that we need, we need parks and recreation for darn sure. And we need to be a lot more in our parks. We need to form some community groups that do, because I don't think you guys got enough. You couldn't hire enough people to keep those parks up. I haven't been by Sam's Park over there in a long time, but I know in the past, I'm seeing some pretty sad things. Weeds and stuff. We're, I'm a little bit long in the tooth, but I'd be happy to go out there and ride a riding lawnmower if it wasn't for the fact that it costs too much insurance and it'd be a risk to the city and all that. You know, we need some people to step up and say, "Here I am, but, you know, you guys know what risk management is and all of that stuff." You can't do it, as much as we'd like to. Citizens just really aren't allowed to be citizens, because somebody's liable to sue them. So, but anyway, I love the parks. I like to drive by Smyrna Park when there's a big family reunion and stuff and think, "Maybe I could stop there and go get something to eat from them." They wouldn't know who the heck I was. They wouldn't know whether I was Uncle Joe's kid or what. But it's nice to see people using the parks like they do. You know? I think they're probably one of our best assets. I really think so. And no, I don't go down and sit in the park or anything. I got my own right there. There's grass and everything I can go sit at in Los Casitas Mobile Home Park. But I just love to see people using it. When I was on the Parks and Recreation, the Toolumine River Regional with the city where Brandy was until Siri dropped out, I really enjoyed going down there, not as a use in the park, but just to see other people using it. So, anyway, parks are good. Beer is good, but I can't drink it anymore. And the good Lord have smile down on all of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhino.
Mr. Shepherd, as far as community groups getting involved in our parks, I saw this past week where we have a Moms Club of Series, and they had posted where they went out to three of our parks and they cleaned them up, which I thought was wonderful, and I'd like to publicly thank them for doing that. I mean, that's pretty impressive.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Well, believe it or not, I'm not gonna complain about anything. Chris, I want to thank you for bringing up the illegal fireworks. I mean, I know that's in the works and something's gonna happen, you know, eventually, you know. I know that the city is working for their, for public safety. I had a chance to talk to a couple of our firefighters the other day, and I asked them, I said, "Are we sending anybody up to the Ferguson Fire?" And they said, "No, because we don't have enough people to send up there." And, and I know the city is working on that, and I just want to let you guys know that, yay, you know, things are coming around. You know, we've got problems within the city, you know, the sideshows, they're starting to happen. And I know that PD is working on them and they're seeing what they can do, but I just wanted to thank you guys and thank you.
Thank you.
Put this thing over this thing, so I don't run out of time. Don Donaldson. Parks and Recreation, everybody knows George Costa, how he got treated. That's a fine person that did a lot of good things for Series, started it behind Carol Fowler. Tom Passalaca started soccer in Series, got kicked out. Somebody else took it over for him. Don Donaldson started flag football, $7. One year, two city employees wanted to take it over. They took it over for one year because their boys went on up to Pop Warner. I started basketball for youth for 34 years, as cheap as I could for this community. Only the kids in this community could play for my program. I got busted out by the MOU. Somebody asked me what was the MOU, and I said, "I don't know." They said, "Could it be the mafia or us?" And I said, "Maybe." They wanted to take the program over. Now there's no more program. The Series Dolphins, years and years and years and years and years and years, you could go by there and see them little kids swimming, and then Connie Cadeau on the computer, taking her boy or her grandson over to Tracy Wells, Tracy West, to participate in swimming. Out there at the baseball park, I put the lights up. They lasted for 29 years. City comes along, gets $2.5 million, cuts them down, puts new lights up, puts a fence around it. Now nobody can go out there and use the baseball park on Saturday and Sunday after the CYB is through. My kids used to go up there and play Indian and play every Saturday and Sunday out there. Now they can't do that. The park is closed down. No more swimming, no more basketball on Saturday. Parks and Recreation? No, not for me. I wished 34 years or 38 years ago that I would've had my Saturdays for my family. A lot of times, a lot of years, I didn't even have a child or a grandchild playing in the program, and I was still down at the gym from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00. And most of you know it. Most of you know it. Most of you played in the program. It's not there anymore. It's gone. Had 200 kids playing, 19 teams. It's not there anymore. A lot of people behind me, their kids played in the program. Just the kids in Series. The reason I did it from school to school to school is because Turlock can't come in here, and their kids play, and you as a taxpayer, your kids sit on the bench. Nope. Gustine wanted to come in, Escalon, nope. This is Series. The taxpayers pay for them gymnasiums. It's not here anymore. I'm not happy. I'm happy, but I'm not happy. I'm happy because Saturdays I can stay home and the practices and stuff, I don't have to do that anymore. But 200 kids. Think about 200 kids not playing basketball there at the Series gymnasium that we pay for. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have one this evening. Council designation of a voting delegate to represent the City of Series at the Annual League of California Cities Conference, September 12th through the 14th, 2018. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. The Annual League of California Cities Conference happens this year in September, and as we do every year, in order for us to participate in the vote of that process, there will be some action items there. This council needs to designate a representative to vote on behalf of the city council at that meeting. So in years past, Councilmember Lane has served in that duty, and we would recommend him as well this year. He has indicated this will be his last year as the delegate for us, so council, your designation to represent.
Does anyone, anyone have a problem with Councilmember Lane serving in that capacity?
No.
No.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this, Tom, or is that direction enough for you?
I think they want a motion.
I'll make a motion to have Mr. Lane, Councilmember Lane, with his last year, so be the representative for Series for California League of Cities Conference.
So we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Rhino. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes forward, 01.
Okay. Conflict of interest declaration, and is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the nine consent calendar items or one new business item? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like an consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Seven and nine.
Seven and eight.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item, either one through six, pulled? Okay. Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Who to approve, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, A, B, and 6?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes forward, 01.
Okay. Item number seven, Resolution Number 2018-076, supporting the effort to help fight childhood obesity-related health conditions by encouraging restaurants that sell children's combo meals to offer water or milk as the default beverages rather than high-caloric drinks. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Klein?
You know, after reading this resolution, and, you know, I read in there, the staff report says that restaurants play a central role in the American diet. You know, I do agree that restaurants do play a role in our diet, but I also believe that our parents play a bigger role in allowing their own children and their makeup of what they eat and drink. It is the parent's role to influence what their children eat and drink, and that is the deciding factor. I do not know of any parent that would let their young child go to a restaurant and let them do, make their own order. I believe it's the parent's responsibility to decide in what they're letting their children eat, drink, and they should not give them the easy way out. Saying that restaurants should make the decision for the parents, I think is totally wrong. If we are going to decide the choice for the parents, then why don't we take away the kids' meals altogether and say that no one under a certain age can eat or consume food at a fast food restaurant until they're a certain age? Or anybody that serves sugary drinks because of that. So with that, I cannot support this resolution. I think it's totally the parent's responsibility. You know, I know that a while back, Series High School did a closed campus, and kids weren't allowed to go off campus, and then all of a sudden, you see the parents that are bringing their kids McDonald's and sodas and giving them stuff through the window and, you know, I mean, Coca-Cola had the contract for the school districts with soda machines. And then there was a push that, you know, this is wrong for our kids. Well, the kids are old enough to make that decision, and all of a sudden, those things went away. And, you know, if you look at Powerade and Gatorade, they have sugar in them, and they think this thing. So, you know, with that being said, I think that, you know, for me, it's really hard to sit here and dictate that a local restaurant or any restaurant, you know, it's the parents that should be the deciding factor. Okay?
And I agree with the Vice Mayor that it's definitely the parents' responsibility. It's not the city's responsibility. And I know the resolution states that it encourages the restaurants not to offer the sugary drinks, but to me, encouraging is almost just like you're ordering them not to. And again, like, when we discussed it, I think we all agreed that the government should not be telling the restaurants what the parents can be giving their kids. Or, as the Vice Mayor said, taking the easy way out and putting it on the city or putting it on the restaurant to say, "Your child is not encouraged to have this," instead of the parent saying it.
Okay.
You know, as an educator and have taught health for many years and physical education at the school, and we did say that we did not support this venture. I mean...
We said we wouldn't support an ordinance.
An ordinance. And we're not gonna say McDonald's can't serve the big drinks. My only thing is, what happens is, because I think there's a lot of clouded people, there's a lot of misinformation. I mean, when you go to McDonald's and you see that they have to put, all restaurants do, I believe, they have to put a list of all the calories and all the, whatever it contains. But I think just from an educational standpoint, that if a city that we're saying that we want to find some way to help fight obesity, then maybe we can word it that way and not necessarily put a drink to it or, you know, a cupcake to it or a cookie to it. But at the same time, too, I think, as a city, I think we should support obesity and all the other things that are there.
Well, if that's the case, then shouldn't we be fighting obesity for parents and for everyone else? I mean, if the city wants to fight obesity, then it should be blanket for everybody. And again, I don't think the city should be getting into that business. It's just my personal belief.
And educating the public, I think. I think we did that here with the programs that we have.
But isn't there a different way to educate the public than to turn around and say, "We support that restaurants should only offer milk or water"?
That's not what we're saying. I don't think that's what this ordinance is.
Not water, not only support, but that is the primary drink or...
The default drink.
The default drink.
I tend to agree with my colleagues to the left. I would like to maybe see this resolution crafted a little bit differently, where the city supports a healthy lifestyle or something along those lines. I know we said we didn't want to do an ordinance, but most people, we'd probably ask, wouldn't know the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. And when you look at the resolution, it's making a statement that we want them to offer water and milk as the default beverages. And again, I don't think it's government's place to dictate meals or drinks or whatever to the public. I think that's best left with the parents and, you know. I could go on for hours as to issues I think parents have with not raising their children the way that they used to, but that's for another day. So at this point, I'm going to ask if there's any comments from the public, and then we can bring it back and either vote for the resolution or suggest changes. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
You know, when I was being raised as a kid, my parents told me what I could eat and what I couldn't. Now, our parents, the parents now, don't even talk to their kids about health and nutrition and everything, because they're too busy doing their thing, and they leave the kids to eat and drink. But if the government, the government starts poking their noses in and telling restaurants and everybody else what they can and can't do, is totally wrong. You're right, Chris. It's the parent's responsibility. If they want to take that responsibility, that's great. Maybe we need to try to educate parents to be responsible for themselves and their children.
Maybe we need to try to educate parents to be responsible for themselves and their children. I don't know. My daughter, when she was growing up, she never, she never drank sodas and stuff. She drank water, she drank lemonade, she drank, but she didn't drink, I didn't let her drink those Gatorades and stuff either, because they're just, they were probably higher sugar content than lemonade or any, and they're not, they're not healthy drinks. I don't think any of that stuff, but it's not our business to tell a store, a restaurant, or whatever, that they can't sell them. It's not our business. It isn't the government's business. It's our own personal business, and we ought to be, you know, I'm probably one of the biggest offenders. I like Diet Pepsi, and I drink a lot of it, and it's nobody's business but mine. And yeah, I'm a fat old boy, and I don't care. I feel happy about myself, and it's not anybody else's business. There's a song that Charlie Daniels wrote, and one of the lines is, "If you don't like the way I'm living, just leave this long-haired country boy alone." That's my feelings. If the government doesn't like the way I'm living and what I'm doing, as they say, they can go whiz up a rope. It's not government's responsibility to try to make parents responsible. You can educate, and you're right, Brett, you can educate, but like to say, you can take a horse to water, can't make him drink, but you can lead a person to knowledge, and you can't make him think either. So I don't know why we're discussing this. Let's just say, let everybody alone and close the books on this one.
Mr. Wells?
So the only reason we're bringing this item to the council was per your direction at the meeting in November, when you said you didn't want to support an ordinance, but you would support a resolution. So the resolution simply encourages, there's no teeth, there's no enforcement, there's no requirements. It's a simple statement of encouragement. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council, the City of Series encourages all restaurants to sell blah, blah, blah. City of Series supports similar efforts. So again, there's no teeth to this ordinance, there's no requirements, this isn't government heaven-handedly. The reason why it's focused on sugary drinks, as you recall, the two thousand and twelve Heal Initiative that we did, that resolution was focused on obesity efforts, as we mentioned, adopting similar programs that other cities in the state were doing as part of League of California cities' efforts. So this was targeted directly at the drinks per the request of the partnership at the time. Again, this is not something from a staff perspective. Again, this is just a response to council direction from the ordinance. So if we could just provide clarity as to whether you're not interested in this resolution at all, or for whether it's a language change issue, we can work with the proponents on that. Again, the council had directed us to bring this back as a resolution rather than ordinance.
Okay, so I guess the question would, do you want to see a revamping of this, or is it something you just don't want to?
I don't know how you could revamp it, because the encouraging part is what bothers me, that we're encouraging. And I think, as you said, Mayor, that most people will not understand the difference between an ordinance or a resolution, so if they see it, they're going to think, well, they have to do it. So I'm fine if we don't do anything with it.
Okay. So with that, I will, let me ask, how does this work, Tom? If I ask if there's a motion on this and there is none, does that mean it dies on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, does anyone?
There's a few options, I'm sorry.
You have a few options, Mayor, but it could just die, or you could make a motion to bring it back in the form as stated by the city manager.
Okay.
I would say just let it die. Staff has other things that they need to do.
Okay, so is that your motion?
That's my motion.
What was his motion?
To let it die.
Just let it die.
Staff has more to do. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
How am I voting on this? I say no.
So you're voting that the resolution will not be adopted?
Yes.
Okay.
Vote. Vote.
To not adopt it.
To not adopt it.
Oh, we didn't get a second.
So the motion dies, and he, first, second, he said yes, I'll say yes to it dying. Okay.
So can I call the room? Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay, item number eight, resolution number two thousand eighteen dash oh seven seven, authorizing the city to enter into a joint powers agreement with the Stanislaus Drug Enforcement Agency. Councilmember Rhino?
I have a couple of questions for the chief. Have we, we have participated in the SDEA previously, but the last few years, we have not, and we've just given them money in lieu of an actual body?
Correct. Since I've been chief here, we haven't had anyone assigned until very recently, two weeks ago, we assigned a detective there.
Okay, so the staff report says that we would be contributing money rather than a person, but now we're going to do a person, which personally, I think is wonderful. I think we're getting back to where we should be, and I would hope that eventually, relatively soon, that we can get our street crimes unit up again. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Question?
It's either or. It's either you pay the money or have someone assigned out there.
Right, and I would rather have someone assigned than pay the money.
Me, too.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other comments from the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on this item.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty eighteen zero seven seven.
Second. Can we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay, item number nine, resolution number two thousand eighteen dash oh seven eight, awarding the construction contract for the roundabout at Morgan, Aristocat, and Central Pine Intersections, CML fifty-two forty-one, parentheses, oh five six, to George Reed Inc. Authorize a ten percent contingency, approve the budget amendment, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Vice Mayor Klein?
Mr. Jordan, this thing was before us probably when we did some update about a month ago, and we were talking about it, and we had a lengthy discussion of the roundabout, and it was anticipated it was going to be done while school was out. So my question to you is, when is the start date? When is the anticipated finish date?
Thank you, Mr. Klein. The anticipated beginning date is September fourth of this year, finishing up around November fifteenth of the same year.
Okay, so with that being said, there is approximately three schools that I know of that are in the area. I could be wrong, there might be four. Okay, but I know there's Don Pedro Center Valley High School, there's KBV down the street. You know, with that, my wish is that there be adequate signage for detours, delays, the work. This be communicated to the local schools to limit the confusion and the delay for parents as they drop their students off to school and then they head off to work. You know, I would hope that we reach out to those schools in advance and notify them so they can get it, because the school, you know, it will be in session, and that Pine Street area right there is very, very hectic. I know of at least three times a day. So I would encourage you and, you know, you and the staff and the contractor to make sure that there's adequate signage and that the schools, you know, at least they can do something, get to their parents, because there are going to be a whole lot of frustrated parents.
Absolutely. We hear you loud and clear, and we'll reach out to all those folks.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? All right, anyone in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution two thousand eighteen zero seven eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing. We have one new business item. Item number ten, opposition to the proposed implementation of the state water resources control boards Bay Delta Plan Phase One Draft Substitute Environmental Document, SED. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor Viera. This item, long title, but simply stated, this is the state's efforts to take our water, i.e., they have a plan to increase the flows down the Tuolumne and Stanislaus Rivers, increasing the flows to other purposes by up to forty percent. This is something this city council weighed in strongly in September of two thousand sixteen in opposition to that plan. The state took lots of testimony over the course of the last couple of years, and then re-released the plan with essentially no changes. So we've already passed a resolution in opposition, but this evening, we've asked the Tralock Irrigation District to come forward, and Josh Wymer is going to give you some information and update and look for council support in the efforts to fight this challenge. Josh?
Thank you, Toby. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Josh Wymer with the Tralock Irrigation District. Just wanted to thank you guys for having, for putting this on the agenda, offering us the opportunity to come back and give a brief update of where the state's at, our response, and what the next couple of months are going to look like. So just to do a brief history, a little bit, elaborate a little bit on what Toby said. The state originally came out with their Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan in two thousand twelve. At that time, they were calling for thirty-five percent unimpaired flow, which is essentially if there is no impairment on the rivers, no dams, no diversion for any kind of purpose, whether it's businesses or agriculture, thirty-five percent unimpaired flow. The irrigation districts and the community came out and supported the opposition to that plan. They're very vocal, the plan is very flawed. And so the state went back, took four years, and then in September of two thousand sixteen, came back out with their re-released SED, and said thirty-five percent, and they said, actually, we need forty percent. And so at that point, the Tralock Irrigation District, along with the Modesto Irrigation District, came out with the Worth Your Fight campaign, which you guys have seen, and contributed and helped out getting the advocacy and the education to our constituents in the region. We had over seven thousand comments, additional three thousand comments from cities like yours and businesses and affected people. There was four public hearings, over forty hours of public testimony, and the state took all that information, a year and a half later, came out on July sixth of this year, and essentially changed nothing in the document. So Mayor Viera, I know that you spoke at that hearing. Unfortunately, they didn't care. They didn't care on the thousands of pages that the Tralock Irrigation District filed, SRWA, drinking water concerns. They didn't care at all. In fact, we are now only able to comment on eighty pages of the document. They said general comments to the SED are done. You're allowed to comment to the newly added or redacted, Independence K, which is eighty pages. Eighty pages out of thirty-five hundred pages in this document. So we're really just going around the community, letting people know that, why we don't need additional resolutions, because the resolution that you adopted in September two thousand sixteen stands, because they haven't changed anything. We are encouraging the city, whether represented from your city or a coalition of the regional cities, to go to the state board August twenty-first, twenty-second, to voice your opposition to the plan, let them know how this is going to impact the area. There's a huge misconception in Sacramento and throughout the state that this plan, the reason that this is needed is because farmers and growers are taking too much water out of the system. What we did through the Worth Your Fight campaign and through your efforts is to let everybody in Sacramento know that this is going to impact way more than just growers. This impacts our cities, our drinking water customers, our schools, our businesses, that you can't just, in their mind, you know, target agriculture, that this impacts our entire region. Our region is based off of these rivers, the Merced, Tuolumne, and Stanislaus River. And so although we're only able to comment on such a small amount in the document, the Tralock Irrigation District and Modesto Irrigation District, we are filing our amended final license application, which is, which we filed with FERC through the relicensing process of the Don Pedro Dam. So back in two thousand seventeen, we said, "We had better science, we had better solutions." And now we actually have that. This Tuolumne River Management Plan, which the City of Series has supported, supported to FERC, and we appreciate your continued support. And so what we're saying is, if the state really cares about the fish, about improving the habitat, then they would use our plan. Our plan produces the environment where fish can thrive in the river at substantially less impact to water customers up and down this region. And so with that, I just wanted to thank you for your continued support of the irrigation districts in this effort, and that we'll continue to communicate with Toby and with the city on any additional efforts that could be done between now and August. What we're hearing is that the comment period ends this Friday, and so they gave us three weeks to comment, and then the hearings are scheduled for August twenty-first and twenty-second up in Sacramento. We're hearing a little conflicting reports whether they're actually going to adopt the plan at those hearings, or whether just have a hearing and then at a later date, maybe in September, actually adopt the plan. So once we know, we'll continue to update city staff so they can keep you informed on what, when it's actually happening. And I should note that we requested the irrigation districts, we requested a thirty-day extension. We thought twenty-one days was just too little to provide all the comments needed. They rejected that extension request, and so the comment period is staying on this Friday and the hearings in August. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it went through that kind of fast, but appreciate your continued support and support in the future.
Any questions?
Well, I do have a question. Do the state, do they even look at the level flows, you know, at different times of the year?
Well, it's funny you mention that, because they like to talk about unimpaired flows, but they're interested in February through June. But in this component, they only look at the drier years, because they talk about averages. If you average everything out, then they said that the impact really isn't that bad. We all know in these areas, when it's wet, it's really wet, and when it's dry, it's very dry. You guys remember the fact that if this plan was in place in two thousand fifteen, TID would provide zero inches to our farmers, to our growers. It'd be the first time ever. And they think that, well, a couple of dry years like that, then you get a wet year and your crops come back, your aquifer is going to raise, which isn't how that happens, obviously. But they don't look at the average unimpaired flow factoring in the wet years. You know, last year was obviously a very wet year. We put four million acre feet down the river. If you factored that in with the years before, we'd be way over forty percent. So they only look at, you know, the dry years when they're factoring in unimpaired flow.
So, and they don't take into consideration the storage and how many acre feet of water that we need for farming or anything like that?
Well, it's unfortunate on that issue specifically. So the forty percent unimpaired flow, while that is bad, that's not the worst part of the plan. The worst part of the plan is they have something called a cold water carryover storage requirement that would essentially require that the districts not use eight hundred thousand acre feet in Don Pedro Reservoir. Essentially removes the entire reason that Don Pedro was built. Don Pedro was built to survive and sustain multi-year droughts like we went through in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. This would essentially not allow us to get, to use half of Don Pedro's storage capacity. And so they obviously have no right to that water. That's a, you know, a public facility that all of the ratepayers of TID and MID, you know, built, paid for, but they, that's something that we'll obviously fight them on, but no, this plan would definitely harm in the dry years, which we know are coming and always going to be here.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, thank you, I'm going, I'm sorry. Mr. Wells?
Just one thing, Josh, if you could give the public that's listening, what else can they do? And I know the second part of that question is, there's a couple of our congressmen are organizing some kind of protest at the Capitol on the twentieth. Is there any additional information you can provide on what, we've talked about what the council could do, but can the public do to help in those, these efforts?
Sure, yeah. Some local assembly members, counties are getting involved and holding a water rally at the state Capitol on August twentieth from noon to two. I think there are flyers that are going to start going around, and so Assemblymember Adam Gray is kind of spearheading that effort. And so I think that there's a link that I can probably get over to you and share that around. But, yeah, his whole goal is to pack the Capitol, show people that this impacts up and down the state, a statewide effort, not just go to the hearings, but actually go to the Capitol and make your voice heard.
Slide, is this, Tom?
I just wanted to add one thing, and I, of course, could never prove it in a courtroom, but some of the supporters of this have tried to frame it as a farm versus fish issue, but when they completely and utterly refuse to acknowledge a scintilla of the science we've presented, the only logical implication to me is that this water is really intended to source the twin tunnels and be sent to Southern California.
Okay, at this time, maybe you can set aside, I know that there's a, we have Supervisor DiMartini would like to speak.
TID guys, a little taller than I am. Good evening, Mayor Viera, members of the council. This is probably the most important issue that's facing this area right now, is the theft of forty percent or better of the water out of the Don Pedro Dam. And not only the Don Pedro Dam is affected, but the Exchequer and the Maloney's Dam also. The Water Resources Board has ignored all the science in there. Irrigation districts have done about thirty-five studies. There has been hundreds of people testify. I couldn't guess at how many, but it could be a couple of thousand people. They've ignored everything. They're, they're basing their decision really just on junk science, that the increased flows only are just there to help the fish. The economic impacts have really been glossed over by the Water Resources Board. The theft of this water will affect all of us. If, if you eat or drink water or have any property, you're going to be affected. Thousands of acres of land will be taken out of production. There'd be equally thousands of people who'll lose their jobs and property values will drop. And the people, except for one possible exception on the Water Resources Board, are, are not scientists, they're not people that are familiar with agriculture, they're just environmentalists. And their goal there is just, just to steal the water, and that's basically what it is, is a theft of the water out of a privately owned dam. And they're going to run it down the river, they say, to help the salmon. But they've neglected, you know, all the science involved in this. There's up to ninety-seven percent of the salmon smold are eaten by the, the striped bass before they ever get out to the ocean. But if they really wanted to do something about increasing salmon numbers, the very first thing you'd want to do would be to take a look at the, the bass and how to reduce those numbers and get more of the salmon out to the sea. But the salmon are really not the issue there, they are the, the excuse to steal the water. And you mark my word, we will all be affected by this, because this will devastate our area economically. About one-third of the people, either directly or indirectly, actually work in the agricultural area. They may not be farmers like myself, but they might be working for equipment dealer or tire company, or food processors, fertilizer companies, or something that supports agriculture or processes the final product. So, there's going to be a lot of people involved in this. What really bothers me is that the, the science has been ignored, the testimony has been ignored, and they're just hell-bent on stealing the water using the, the fish as an excuse. Stanislaus County is opposed to this Bay Delta water plan, just as you guys are. It's the right thing to do to protect our economic interest over here. This is our water. It's, it's not the state's water. The state never put a penny into the Don Pedro Dam or the distribution system. They ignore also the, the power generation that we have. Dumping the water down the river at the time when the power generation is not needed is also going to cost, you know, the irrigation districts a lot of money, having to buy their power in the summertime. So, this is a really big issue. I'm glad to see the City of Series is on board with this, as is Stanislaus County. And I would also like to compliment, you know, the irrigation districts, Turlock and Modesto, and also Oakdale Irrigation District, too. They've been working to fight this thing from the very beginning, and there's been a lot of cooperation between the irrigation districts, you know, the cities and the county. So, this is like a must-win for us, because if they take our water, and they say they're going to take forty percent, they can take up to sixty. And this man, I didn't catch his name from the TID here, he is absolutely right. In like 2015, if that plan had been in effect, there would be zero water allocated for agriculture. There'd be nothing. And the trees are not going to live without water here. It's going to cause the aquifers to be overpumped, and it is going to be devastating what could happen here. So, and I, this last comment I had, Mayor City Attorney was actually right on the tunnels being involved here. That's really what this thing's really all about, is the, the state wants to divert the Sacramento River around the delta, which would just degrade the, the water quality in the delta. There'll be saltwater intrusion coming in, which really degrades the water quality. And that's where our water comes in. The water out of the Don Pedro, the Exchequer, and the Maloney's Dam will be flushed down the river to, to, for the saltwater intrusion that will be caused by diverting the Sacramento River around the delta. And that's, that's the real reason there. Nobody will admit it, but your city attorney is really smart, you know, he's figured all that out. But that's, that's exactly what it looks like to me also. Anyway, thanks for being on board with this. I mean, we're in support with the county, too, and this is, like I say, a must-win situation for us.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
I'm an old farm boy. I was raised in Fresno County. They have a similar problem. State wants to steal everything. They either want to send it to Southern California or whatever. But I saw something, a big poster the other day, and it made me laugh a little bit. Tom, you mentioned the twin tunnels. It said, solve the problem with the twin tunnels, stick the train to nowhere into them and plug them up. And I thought, that's a great idea, because water rights belong, they do not belong to the government, they belong to the people, because the people are the ones who have the po, the ability to provide. When you see a sign that says, no farm, no water, no farms, no food, it's true. Take away the water to our farms, and I don't care how much you say water conservation, water conservation, you aren't going to save a drop, because it's all going to go to Southern California or to, I call them the environmental wackos. They don't want anybody to disturb their little environment. And what are they doing? They're destroying it. If you don't allow the farmers to farm, you know what the San Joaquin Valley is going to be again? One huge, large alkali desert. In eighteen forties, the summertime, the only, the only crops that they ever planted at the end of summer was wheat, for the fall and winter wheat harvest. That's all. There were no trees, there were no vineyards. The vineyards and the trees were all up in the mountains, in the foothills. And how did they get, get that? They built dams. So, here we are with all of our science and everything, and the bandits have got us held up. Thank you.
You know, we went to that meeting about the, the water thing for the county, was it last year or whatever, but that building was packed downtown, and there was a lot of farmers. And you could tell on their faces that this was really going to be devastating, you know, and, you know, my thing is, is are those guys in Sacramento crazy? I mean, I know they're not elected officials, they're appointed officials, so it's like, duh, you know? So, it's like, I'm just, I applaud you guys for opposing it, and I would hope that maybe up there, they realize that, you know, who is the top of the food chain? That would be the humans and not the salmon. Me personally, I don't like salmon, you know? I can live without them. But I understand where they're coming from, that they want to protect them, but they've got to find a different way. You know, maybe Mr. DiMartini said it right, you know, let's get, you know, do something about the striped bass and quit eating them. But thank you all.
It's green.
Well, I'm a salmon fisherman. I love to go salmon fishing. But I also like the farmers. I like the farmers here in the valley. I don't like the, the, the farmers in, in San Francisco that has no clue of what an almond looks like. But they belong to the LLC, and about twelve or fifteen of them are together, and they hire one of my friends over here on River Road to take care of all their almond fields from Los Banes all the way to Stockton. Now, where's the water going? They're, they're planting almond trees up in Oakdale, even there on High Five, right out of Manteca and, and Stockton. There are almond trees going on all over. Where does most of the almonds go? China, Japan? We have forty percent of the almonds. What, what fruit and vegetables do we grow here in the valley anymore? Not very much, almonds. We don't even have peaches anymore. So, I don't, and it is, it is, the water is, I, I don't have to go salmon, I can buy my salmon down there at Save Mart or something. I like to go, but I don't have to go. Water is, is valuable, because my water bill was a hundred and eighty-nine dollars last week, last month. So, you know, it, it is something that we, we have to have. We just have to have water. We can't waste it. Mr. DiMartini is a farmer out in, out, out there by Patterson. He has to have water to, to irrigate his walnuts and almonds and stuff. I don't mind saving water for him, but the people up there in San Francisco that's sitting there, I do mind giving it to them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom, do we need a motion or just, this is an update? This was just an update?
Yeah, we'd agendize it as a new business item, just in case you wanted to take some action or give staff some direction at this point, based on the input and the conversation from TID, our resolution is, is sufficient. We don't need anything new there, but it probably would be helpful, council, direction to, if we want to provide a comment letter, that would probably be best to authorize you as the mayor to, to sign a comment letter, just so we're on record that we're, our same opposition from 2016 is still there. I think that's probably the best course of action at this point in time.
I, I think that speaking for this, this body will do whatever they would like us to do in support of this, because it, it is a critical item. And as all of us know, all of our current drinking water comes from the ground, so you can work through the logistics of what will happen if this were to go through, and the farmers are not provided any water from the irrigation district. They're, they will pump, and they will pump from the same aquifers that we are pumping from. And so, that will not be good. So, anyway, I, I think we all, all support it and, and, and as the rallies or supports come up, let us know, and, and we'll try to see if we can get as many people there and support as we can. With that, council member referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
I would. I would like to have a discussion on boundary dropping. And the reason that I want to is, I see quite often articles in the Bee that Series is up in Central Modesto or North Modesto helping with the fire, and then we go a couple times a day, and then we only have potentially one fire truck here, maybe none, and I just, I would like to have a discussion about it.
So, just so I, would you like them to put together the data that shows how?
I, I would like the data that shows how often we're going to help and how often we're receiving that kind of help. And what happens when, now that we have three stations, what happens if all of our resources are helping another department? What happens to the citizens of Series?
Okay, is that something you can pull that in?
Of course, of course. The answer, the simple answer is, we're covered by other agencies. So, the way the resource sharing works, the boundary dropping terminology is not used any longer, but resource sharing is the nearest, nearest resource responds to the incident, and when our resources are depleted, we are backfilled. So, the most recent incident where there was a concern that we were not covered was one-hundred percent incorrect. We were actually covered by two departments. We were covered by the City of, City of Turlock, who had a battalion chief and an engine thirty-four sitting in Station Fifteen, which is our station one, as well as the City of Houston's engine and battalion chief sitting in Station Sixteen, which is on Pecos. So, the statement that we were not covered was a hundred percent incorrect. We were actually covered with two stations filled while we were responding to two separate incidences in Burbank. But we can absolutely provide that information for you. It'll probably be September, based on what our current schedule is, if that's sufficient.
Thank you. I would like that information, but I also find it hard to believe that if our units are dispatched to other cities, do they sit here and wait for whoever is going to cover us? Do they sit here and wait for them to show up, or do they immediately go to the call?
So, the way it works is what's called run cards, and under those run cards, these scenarios are developed when resources are deployed to these different areas of response. The automatic adjustment happens where, when we get dispatched, the other areas get dispatched. And normally, it's a battalion chief who's running resources when these multiple incidents are going on, and they begin to move those apparatus as soon as those calls come in.
So, I don't know that that really answered my question. It's very con-
Why don't we, since it isn't agendized, you know, I, I don't want to get too much into this, let, let's go ahead and bring the data.
Is September sufficient, timing-wise?
What's that?
September, is that sufficient, timing-wise? Just because August is already booked with other activities that you've directed me on.
Early September?
That would be the target for the first meeting in September.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes. I would like to have a discussion about temporary cameras in troubled areas for dumping. You know, I've, I've received a couple of emails lately, and, you know, I've, I've sent messages to Mr. Wells, you know, but I, I know that we've had some trouble areas around Central Valley High School, on the central area and Service Road, where we might be able to set up temporary cameras to get the people and at least cite them or do something with how they're dumping, so at least a discussion that we might be able to have some temporary cameras that we can float around.
We're already moving forward on that, but we'd be happy to bring more information to you. Again, September, is that sufficient?
That's fine. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, reports, I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Drosset?
Nothing.
Okay, we'll start, Tom?
Yeah.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, mayor. Two items this evening to reference. On July 31st at 10:30 here on the community center, we will be the host for a U.S. naturalization ceremony. Mayor Viera will be making a brief presentation where a bunch of folks will be sworn in as U.S. citizens. So, that's a pretty cool activity here. It'll be conducted in, here in the community center. Congressman Denham will be here as well, so that's, that's an exciting day on that day. Also, wanted to reference August 11th, which is the Centennial Stroll Through the Mansion. Take a walk back in time, that will be on August 11th in the afternoon, so more details to follow. It is on the council's calendar. That's it for this evening.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook? Mr. Jordan? Mr. Smith? Okay. Ms. McCoy? Nothing? Jeremy? Nothing? Supervisor DiMartini? Okay. All right, with that, we will move to closed session where we have two items. First is conference with labor negotiator, followed by public employee performance evaluation. So, after that, we won't have anything to report out. So, then we will adjourn to our next meeting, which will be Monday, August 13th at 6:00 PM. So, thank you. So, after that, we won't have anything to report out. So, then we will adjourn to our next meeting, which will be Monday, August 13th at 6:00 PM. So, thank you.
Thank you.